You know, it doesn't matter.
I'm going to call the order. The planning board meeting for April 15th, 2024. Can we stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag in the states of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God.
The liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for April 15th, 2024? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 21st, 2024?
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chair. Can we get a vote on the agenda?
Oh, you're right.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor of approving the agenda for April 15th, 2024?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to approval of the minutes for February 21st, 2024. Does anybody have any?
Should we hold that in case he comes in and he must? Oh, he wasn't here.
No, no, he wasn't here.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody that wants to make any changes or see any additions or subtractions to the minutes? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 21st, 2024? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, four to oh. Next, we're going to move to public comments, and I think we won't have too many tonight. Okay, no public comments, so we will move on to old business. We have two ZTA's to discuss this evening, and the first is ZTA 2305, which is a zoning text amendment application submitted by the town of Southern Shores to amend town code sections 30-2, 30-124, 36-57, 36202D, 36203D, 36204D, 36205D, and 36206D to amend the town's current lot width requirements by adding the definition of lot width line, restating the definition of yard, amending the requirements for preliminary plaques, amending the definition of building setback line, and amending the definition of lot width by establishing new measuring points for lot width. Wes, you want to?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairperson. We're bringing this back to you all again. This will be the third time you all have considered a zoning text amendment for lot widths. Thank you all for bearing with us. Instead of taking, at the last meeting, you all recommended denial of that draft. Instead of moving forward with it, we felt that it'd be best to rework it and bring it back to you all. So I can just go through what we're proposing here in this draft. The idea is to do away with the building setback line, which is something we kind of discussed at the last meeting. I asked, you know, what did you all think about using the word term lot width line? And I was half joking, but after talking with the town attorney, we think that, you know, it's a good way to move forward. So we are proposing to delete building setback line, and that applies not only in the zoning ordinance but in the subdivision ordinance. This draft now includes changes to the subdivision ordinance in section 30-2 definitions. So we're deleting building setback line from the subdivision definitions as well as in the zoning definitions. They're both defined the same in each ordinance. We're also adding the definition of lot width line to subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance. And it's the same definition in both ordinances. And lot width line we're proposing means a line established 25 feet from the front lot line or the point where the lot is 100 feet wide, whichever distance is closer to the front lot line. Another change we're proposing is to add the definition of yard in the subdivision ordinance exactly how it's defined in the zoning ordinance. I'm not going to read that definition. You all are familiar with that. Next, we are amending the preliminary plaque requirements in the subdivision ordinance where currently it requires showing the proposed minimum building setback line or lines on preliminary plaques. So since we're proposing to no longer use building setback line, we've deleted that and showed that lot width line must be shown on preliminary plaques as well as proposed yards. That's in the subdivision ordinance. And in the definition, in the zoning ordinance definitions, we have, again, deleted building setback line, lot width amended the definition. So it now means the width of a lot at the required lot width line. And we have revised the lot width definition so that it means a line established 25 feet from the front lot line or the point where the lot is 100 feet wide, whichever distance is closer to the front lot line, which is the same definition that we've proposed in the subdivision ordinance. So then in sections 36202, 204, 203, 205, and 206, which is all the residential district schedule of district regulations and the government and institutional district regulations, they are all identical with what's being proposed. The minimum lot width for lots created after June 6, 2023, 100 feet wide. This is in the case of 202. The RS1 district is 100 feet wide, measured at the lot width line, period. So just to kind of illustrate what we're trying to do here, if you look on your screens or the screens above, whichever is easier, this is a lot on Oyster Bed Lane in Chickahaw. Measure 100 feet in from the front lot line, from the front to here, that this yellow line is the lot width line as we're proposing. If we go to a different lot, a different example. This one's on Pudding Pan. That previous situation was a cul-de-sac lot. This is one that's on a curve. But in this one, the lot width at the front is less than 100 feet wide, and it becomes 100 feet wide at 11.5, 11 and a half feet from the front lot line. So this, in this case, the lot width line is towards the front where the lot becomes 100 feet wide. Otherwise, the lot width line is established at 25 feet from the front, whichever is closer to the front.
Does that go into the calculation for how many square feet is in the lot? Is it 100 foot line going back?
It doesn't have to do any, no, sir. It doesn't have any bearing on the minimum lot size calculation. I mean, we're telling folks where the lot, you know, where the lot has to be 100 feet wide, and then whenever they're creating a lot, they have to, you know, make sure that that lot meets 20,000 square feet.
Wes, on this particular lot that you have up now, and it's approximately 11 feet?
From the front? Am I correct?
Yes.
Could, is there still a 25-foot restriction for building?
Yes, so, I'm sorry, in the amendments, what we're saying is that buildings, there was some confusion as to building setback line, and it's used for determining lot width as well as the actual setbacks for a structure. So that's why we propose to do away with building setback line, because we've always had yard. And I'll go to it over here. Yard has always been in place, and that's what we use for the actual setbacks. 25 feet from the front, 15 on the sides, 25 feet from the rear. So you'll see in 36202, minimum front yard, 25 feet; minimum side yard, 15 feet; additional five feet if it's a corner; minimum rear yard, 25 feet. So you have the lot width line here, but I didn't draw on here. You'll have a line here for your front yard, a line here for your side yard, a line here for the other side yard, a line here for the rear yard. Those are your setbacks.
Okay. And could you go back to the other, the first one that you did?
The width, you moved it back to 100. Would the width actually be closer to the front of the property, 100? That's where the?
That's where the, in this particular case, this is where the lot becomes 100 feet wide.
Okay.
So that's where the lot width line would be located.
Okay.
Good. Seems like it becomes 100 feet wide closer to the street, like maybe 90 feet or something like that. Because it's already, it's 131 feet.
No, it's, it's 131 feet from this distance to this, from that line to this line.
Right.
And this measurement right here is from right here.
No, I understand, but that's not the true lot width line, the yellow one. The true lot width line is closer to the street than that.
I disagree. I believe it's exactly 100 feet from the front.
Yeah, I don't see what 100 feet from the front has to do with anything.
Because we're saying that the lot width, we're now saying what we're proposing is that the lot width line is established 25 feet from the front lot line or the point where the lot is 100 feet wide, whichever distance is closer to the front lot line.
But the way you look at this lot, they're questioning that it seems like it could be closer to the street because it's 131. In other words, if you come in 31 feet from that point, will it be, you know, closer to 100?
This distance right here, this mint green line?
No, we're not talking about that, though.
I'm sorry?
I don't think they're talking about that. They're talking about the yellow line.
The yellow line is, I mean, the only reason I have the line there, I can't remove that number, but the 131.62 is not where the lot becomes 100 feet wide. That's the distance from here to here, which has no bearing on where it becomes 100 feet wide. No, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. McLennan. My apologies. I see what you're saying. It should be, it's where it's 100.
It should be closer. That's why I asked you to go back to it.
When I drew, I had to redraw this three different times earlier today, and I think on the last one, I thought I had it at 100. My apologies.
I got it.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's why I asked you to go back with it. I didn't quite understand.
So let's just do a different one, just so we make sure we're on the same page. I'm sorry. So we need to go, we need to find wherever the lot width is 100 feet wide.
Right.
So it wouldn't be here. We'll call it right here.
Perfect.
That would be the lot width line.
Okay.
And then, and then we'll just see from here, it's approximately 48 feet. So instead of being at 25 feet, because it's not 100 feet wide at that point, it moves back to wherever it is 100 feet wide. And in this case, it would be 41, about 48 feet.
Okay. Okay.
My apologies, Mr. McLennan.
That's cool.
Yeah. No problem.
Wrapped around that stuff all the time, myself.
So yeah, I mean, in this case, the lot width line is beyond 25 feet. And then in the other example that I had, it's only about 11 feet from the front. So it depends. And in this case also, I mean, we're only applying this to lots created after June 2023. So this would be when we have a recombination or a subdivision. We're trying, I mean, we're trying to make sure that it's simple and it's not ambiguous. This is our latest attempt to do that. I'd welcome any other comments you all may have on it.
I, I do, like in multifamily, let's say. We have the minimum lot width is 75 feet, measured at the lot width line. But our lot width line definition references 100 feet, a 100-feet requirement. So I don't understand that.
That's a good comment. The 100 feet would apply only in the 202. And then in the 203, it could, it should be 75. So in the definition, in the definition, we would need to change that to say where it's 100 feet wide, 50 feet wide, or 75 feet wide, whichever is applicable.
It seems like we need that lot width line definition to actually be based, you know, redefined, basically, depending on the district.
I would, yeah, I would suggest saying where the lot width, where the lot is 50 feet, 75 feet, or 100 feet wide, whichever is applicable in the district it is located. Something to that effect.
Right.
Okay.
Good catch. Thank you.
Yeah.
Often, obviously, we often forget that we allow lots still today that are less than 100 feet wide because we rarely ever deal with them when they're being created anyway.
Right.
Do we have many at 75 feet still?
Well, in this case, for the RS8 multifamily district, we only have, I mean, pretty sure, G I S is wrong there. We have, only have Pelican Watch, I think, is, it's either RS8 or RS10.
Okay.
And then there's Southern Shore, not Southern Shore Landing, but Mallard Cove. Southern Shore's Landing was owned commercial. Yeah, Mallard Cove is RS10. So their lot width, I think, is 50. Is that right? No, 75.
75.
Government and institutional might be the one that's 50. Yeah.
Yeah.
G and I, but we only, Town Hall Complex Lot and the vacant lot next door, and the Community Foundation, theirs owned G and I. There are no other properties owned G and I currently where we could have created a 50-foot lot. We would still need to add what Mr. McLennan suggested, a reference to the other lot sizes in the definition, which is easy to do.
Yeah. Do we have any more discussion on this?
Do you feel comfortable with the changes that we're talking about? Taking it to the council and letting them decide whether or not you've made the changes that are appropriate? Or would you rather bring it back to us?
I mean, I think taking it, I mean, if you all, I mean, all I would be doing was just adding to that definition 25 feet from the front lot line or the point where the lot is 100 feet wide. Well, not in this order, but 50 feet wide, 75 feet, or 100 feet wide, whichever is applicable.
Whichever district.
Whichever district is applicable. And, yeah, whichever distance is applicable.
Makes sense, do you?
Yeah.
District, and then it's followed by whichever distance is closer to the front lot line.
Do we have any more discussion on ZTA 2305? If there's no more discussion, do we have a motion concerning ZT 2305? Well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve ZTA 2305 with the corrections that were discussed where it states where applicable with the 50, 75, and 100 foot.
I second it.
Okay. We have a second. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. We'll have a vote. All those in favor of approving ZTA 2305 with the corrections stated? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you all.
I think I just saw Andy pull up.
Okay.
When he walks in, I'm going to say, I have a motion to adjourn. When he walks in, I'm going to say, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Tell me, I'd like to lead this to the flag.
Yeah, separately. That's right, separately, yeah. Before we get into the, we're going to go into the next one. But this is the floor area ratio. Whenever we get into that, did everybody read that by any chance?
Yeah, really.
Okay. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I second it.
I'll move.
Early for 5:30, but late for 5:00.
Welcome.
Have we started already?
We're done. We're done, man.
We already got the first one done.
We're, we're on to the ZTA.
We start at 5:00. You must have thought it was 5:30, but it's 5:00.
I apologize.
You go to too many council meetings.
Yeah. Jesus. Sleep at the wheel.
We're up to this. It's got approved with changes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we changed it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. You mean this is in the town council meeting? Apologies for being late. Okay, Tony says we are done with old business on the agenda. So we're good to go there, moving into new business.
Pledge of allegiance. By yourself.
Sorry. Wes, can you give us a brief synopsis of CTA 2403?
Yes. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairperson. Thank you. The next item on your agenda is ZTA-2403, and this is a ZTA submitted by the town to make some amendments to incorporate commercial design standards into the town zoning ordinance as well as make one 160D consistency change. I'll just run through the proposed changes briefly. The change to, the proposed amendments to 36-163, we're proposing to amend the parking requirement for all uses other than single-family residential homes from 18 feet, 18 by nine and one-half to 18 by just nine, 18 by nine feet. This is per 160D. They said you can't require anything beyond that. So that's pretty straightforward. Also, in 163, 36163, the parking requirements, we're proposing a reduction of required parking spaces for providing trees by saying that the total parking requirement for every 20 parking spaces for the proposed use or existing use may be reduced by one parking space for each tree that is provided in excess of a required buffer for up to five parking spaces. And if y'all recall, this is very similar to the bike racks in group developments that we currently have in our ordinance. So this is similar to that. In the definition of specific terms and words, 3657, we are adding the term substantial improvement. This is the definition taken directly from the flood ordinance, which comes, the definition in the flood ordinance comes from the FEMA template. It's a definition provided by FEMA that we followed in our flood ordinance. In section 36179, we are creating this. This would be a new section in the zoning ordinance. And it would be titled Commercial Design Standards. And, you know, we discussed this at a couple meetings. And you all provided guidance on what you all wanted to see in the ZTA that addressed commercial design standards. One of those things was a sketch plan review. You all wanted the opportunity to review whatever someone was proposing prior to an official review. So in this section, 36179A, we do have that here where it's voluntary. Right now, it says, "Prior to submission of a site plan review application for all uses other than one or two family dwelling units, the applicant may submit to town staff at least 30 days, or seven days prior to a regularly scheduled planning board meeting, nine copies of a sketch plan. The planning board shall review and comment on the proposed development and its consistency with the standards in this section and other requirements in this chapter." So that sketch plan review was included in there. So that sketch plan review was included in there. And then 36-179B, generally, in the general commercial district, for all uses other than one and two family dwelling units, new construction and substantial improvements, as defined above, substantial improvements, shall comply with the following standards. And in the staff report, identify the source of where they came from. I can go through them individually if you like, or, okay. Most of them come from Killarl, or Duck, rather, Duck in Killarl Hills. I don't think that might be one from accident. I can't recall without looking. But all of these were items you all requested at the last planning board meeting. This was discussed. So then, moving on to section 36-299, we added a reference to site improvements or for site plans, commercial design elements pursuant to section 36-179 if applicable. That is for, that is in the list of the requirements that must be shown or adhere to when an applicant applies for an official site plan review. So actually, we need to, the amendment on page 35, page four of five, line 36 and 35, we're withdrawing that part. There would be no proposed amendment to that section. There would just be the proposed amendment on line 40, where it says, commercial design elements pursuant to section 36-179 if applicable. Because line 35, site improvements that meet the requirements, that's, in some cases, there would be, there could be a use where they don't have to meet the commercial design standards, such as a, let's see, single-family home or multifamily, two-family dwelling unit. So we, by taking it out from C, not proposing it there, it's not there currently, we were just proposing it where it says on line 40, commercial design elements pursuant to section 36-179 if applicable, because it wouldn't be applicable in all cases.
So is C already in there, or?
C is in there with the exception of what's underlined.
Okay.
So we're just, we're, that part needs to come out, that, that proposed amendment, we're not proposing, that's been removed. We would just be proposing, the only changes proposed to section 36-299 would be what's on line 40.
Okay.
And those, that's, that's what we're proposing currently. If you all have any questions, I can try to answer them.
I have a question, and that's about the sketch plan review, when you write or have in there the applicant may submit.
Right.
So they could choose not to. Do we want to strike the word "may"?
That's up to you all. We're recommending "may". You know, if you all want to recommend otherwise, you can certainly do so. We just feel, I mean, they already have to meet a lot of other requirements when they come for a site plan review. So this just gives them some flexibility, and if this is ever, if this is adopted, they would have to, when they come for a site plan review, they already have to adhere to the commercial design standards when they submit. So we just thought that it was another layer of review. If someone did not want to go through it, they, they wouldn't have to.
So do we review sketch plans?
I think what we're trying to do is to see it upfront.
Well, and my question, why nine days? Why not say two weeks, or, you know?
Seven days.
Try to circumvent getting, you know, 12 pages of site plan dropped in our lap?
Just a point of clarification, do we currently review sketch plans and site plans?
In the subdivision ordinance, there's a provision for reviewing a sketch plan of a subdivision, but there aren't any other sketch plan reviews in the zoning ordinance.
We only, we review it when we get to the site plan.
Correct.
I see, currently.
And so the sketch plan review, it would not be a full site plan. It would just be what's required here. It shall consist of a narrative and conceptual renderings that show the proposed buildings, building elevations, landscaping, and parking areas. So not necessarily everything would be shown, but that's almost everything.
And the, and so, again, we're adding, we're saying that if they, we're adding that the planning board will review a sketch plan.
May review.
Well, it says they may submit.
Right.
A sketch plan, and if they do, the planning board shall review and comment on it.
Right.
Basically, it's leaving it up to the developer whether or not they want to do a sketch plan.
Yes, sir.
I'm of the opinion that it should either be, "may" should either be taken out or put "shall" in its place.
Yeah.
And maybe stretch out.
The seven days, a little bit longer, higher to?
Was that anything in 160D, the seven days, or?
No, sir, that, that came from subdivision, subdivision ordinance. If someone wants to submit a sketch plan voluntarily to the board, sketch plan with respect to subdivision, that was the language, it was seven days in there, so you all can certainly make another suggested timeframe.
I think "may" and 14 days, you know, a couple of weeks, or "shall", rather, "shall" on 14 days.
Yeah.
Since we're putting in commercial design standards, I think that it's easier for the person that's drawing this plan and has an idea of what they're doing, if they're on the right foot from the very beginning, you know, what is going to be approved, you know, by the town.
Yeah, it definitely makes sense from a development standpoint for the developer to do that. But as far as the teeth that say "may",
Right.
I mean, that's just suggested it's not.
So, yes, sir, I've, I've got "may" revised to "shall", you all were recommending, and seven days to 14.
Right.
I, would, the sketch plan review, then, would that only come to us, or would we refer it to the council? Make any recommendations?
It would only come to you all, and you all would provide comments to the proposed, on the proposed development to the applicant. It would just be you all to the applicant.
Okay.
Do y'all want to just go page by page in the ZTA itself? I mean, Wes has got a staff report, but, but let's flip over and look at, starting with page two. And I had a, I had a question about, in line, starting with line 34, production of required parking for providing trees. I think we should put some kind of size there.
Does seem like a gimme, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It's like, just stick a tree, put an extra tree in, and you can drop a space.
Now, we, we definitely need to quantify what a tree would be in that equation. I don't have the answer, but I think certainly we need to specify something.
We could go by gallons. What, how many gallons would, you know?
Typically, you go by a ball size.
You go by ball size.
Or the trunk size, a 12-inch, you know, trunk versus a 6-inch.
What are the tree requirements that we're referring to here? In, in the buffer?
Not necessarily in the buffer.
Say, in addition to?
Yeah, in addition, if we want, I mean, if, I don't know if you all want to refer to language that's currently used in the buffer and landscaping requirements as far as a size, where it has to be, you know, certain, certain size following like six months planning, I think. Shall it reach a height of six feet in three years? Six feet in three years?
What is a typical buffer in commercial requirement? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's what it needs to be.
Six feet in three years.
Whatever we're requiring in the buffer.
Yeah, six feet within three years is used pretty consistently in the land, buffers and landscaping ordinance section. Which can be expected to reach a mature growth of eight to 10 feet. Suitable plant types will be those recommended for the coastal area.
Where is that?
It's in the buffers.
No, I mean, where is the source?
The Department of Agriculture.
God would say, okay, what trees do you all want, or will accept? Where do you have those, those tree species? Or you should develop that. Because then who would make the decision?
Where did the, where'd this originate? What's the intent behind this?
This particular provision?
Yes.
You all had asked for in the ZTA, less parking, more landscaping. This is an attempt to do that?
Well, if they planted a, you know, a major tree in that parking space.
Well, they're saying six to eight feet is what the buffer requires.
Yeah, we're adding to the buffer, is all we're doing. Which the buffer should be complete anyway.
Right.
Adding a tree doesn't really.
Well, somewhere in, I mean, just for instance, Marple Park, I mean.
Yeah, it could be aesthetics, like they, they used to have a food line. They had trees in certain locations.
An island.
An island.
With a tree.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I'm.
That's what, that's what I vision, yeah, yeah. That's what I visualize, yeah.
I appreciate that.
But that's a substantial tree.
Yeah, the buffer is pretty much set, so it should be adding shade in the parking lot.
And I don't, it's not the intent. This isn't saying that it has to be in the buffer. This is just in, in excess of what they're required to do in a buffer. So they have to provide a buffer, but they can also provide trees anywhere they want to meet this requirement.
Right.
In order to get the credit. We're not saying it has to be in the buffer.
Right. But I think we should specify where we would like it.
I see.
As opposed to just saying, put an extra one in the buffer, which, to me, the buffer should have been complete to begin with.
Yeah, but that, that would be on the setback lines.
Right.
And this would be throughout the, the project.
I think that, that, if that's the intent, that's what we should say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But for a developer, he's gonna look at this and say, it is cheaper for me just to continue with the concrete than putting a tree up, because what it's gonna take to create an island. But that goes back to getting the sketch plan. When we see it and they come in, we can then suggest to, hey, if you put in a tree here and here, we'll allow you to eliminate, you know, how many parking spaces, you know? So, I mean, to go back and dictate how they're gonna, what type of tree and create an island, you know, I think to me, if I were the developer, it's gonna be more costly to stop my pavement, you know, because I'm gonna have to get some type of water to that tree, and then I'm gonna have to create, you know, a thing around it, that's all. I'm sorry. Has to be a way of being able to suggest to that developer how aesthetics plays into it, and I think when we get a site plan, that's when we start the, hey, friendliness of going back to that developer and saying, this is, we're all gonna live here, we would like this to look like this.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll note here that we need to specify where we want, where these trees would have to be planted, and we want them to provide shade.
And be of a similar requirement as the buffer, six to eight feet to maturity, 10 feet, maybe, I don't know.
You could put in, for instance, he's writing, Wes is writing, I'm gonna wait till he's done writing.
You can go ahead, I'm listening.
Oh. By one part, I'm, I'm starting in the middle, reduce by one parking space for each tree aesthetically placed in a non buffer area.
Yeah, certainly, they wouldn't just have a three-foot circumference hole with a tree. I mean, it would have to be some, some type of an island.
Well, that, that, if they have an island.
Yeah.
You know, that, you can reduce it if you create, we're giving it, if I'm correct, 162 square feet, that's one parking space, and wait, no, 18 by 9, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
18 by 9.
So that's 162 square feet they don't have to pave in lieu of putting a parking space, I mean, putting a tree somewhere.
And we should incentivize that as much as we possibly can.
Sure, absolutely.
Look at any commercial area throughout the United States, there's, except at Christmas time, there's way more parking than anybody would ever need. So it would be good to give it as an incentive to put a tree rather than a parking space.
Yeah.
Take that requirement out, I mean.
If they can put a, a mature shade tree, or a tree that will provide shade in the parking lot, just in the parking lot, they can do it in an island, they can do it in, like if they divide it up and you've got equal parking spaces and you've got a little remnant, put a shade tree there in the middle of it.
How about if we put greater than or equal to tree height required in the buffer?
No, it's got, I mean, putting a shrub, a 10, an eight-foot shrub in the parking lot, that doesn't do any good.
Okay.
To me. I think it needs to be a mature shade tree, a tree that's considered a shade tree.
So you gotta get more than 10 feet.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, we'll, we'll leave that up to the wordsmith up there to craft.
I'm gonna order.
And it, I mean, should be a native species.
Yeah, well, we, we.
Not a great murder.
We should, we should establish a vegetation list if we possibly do.
Is everybody satisfied with that discussion, words?
Yeah.
Right now. Well, jumping back up, Wes, is there any repercussions, or are you aware of other municipalities that have scaled down their parking space size? I mean, we've only taken a half a foot off, or six inches off of it.
Yeah, I, I know some communities had to, they had to make changes to them as well.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's becoming more and more common to see ordinances put a maximum number of parking spaces, as you were saying to, you know, there's, I mean, in some cases, there's just so many parking spaces required that are unnecessary, so you're starting to see some folks, some jurisdictions cut back on that.
Well, if we can give the developer incentive to have less parking spaces, which, in my mind, planting a tree that will survive is way better than pavement.
Yeah.
The, the parking space size, you said that comes from 160D?
Yes, sir.
Are we okay with the, the ratio, the total parking requirements for every 20 parking spaces, maybe reduced by one parking space for each tree?
Yeah.
So, good with that? All right, any, anything else on?
I, I would take out the reference to the buffer. To me, this, this doesn't really have anything to do with the buffer.
No, no. Don't you mind any time?
No.
You suggested as far as the buffer.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, then that need, that tree needs to be just a stand on its own, native species shade tree, however Wes will be able to word that in.
Okay.
So shall we say it's a deciduous tree?
Um, we'll probably use something similar to what's in the other part of the zoning ordinance about buffers, shall be those recommended for the coastal, coastal area by the Department of Agriculture or something similar.
Yeah.
Native to the area.
You want far, like, um, what is that? What's that? Evergreen, it comes up all the time. Evergreen, it comes up all the time.
Laminocypress.
Loblawli?
No, not loblawli, but yeah, I think it's laminocypress. That's not a shade tree.
No, that's not a shade tree.
It's not a, well, it says here shall be...
A live oak, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think you'd have to have...
Shall be recommended for the coastal area by the Department of Agriculture. I mean, that's in, in there already, in the buffer language, so. And then once again, Jan, to your suggestion, at site review, I mean, at preliminary review, we could...
Recommend.
Anybody else have anything on page two? All right, page three. I think substantial improvement has been spelled out by staff. I'm just wondering if 50% is the right point to hit? I mean, that seems like a, a big improvement to, to go to 50%. Seems more than substantial to me.
Yeah.
Substantial.
Isn't 50% the number that you use on, when you're, when you're doing a house? Like the older houses where they had a 10-foot? And then if they do a total repair, they have to, you know, if something happens at the house, it goes back? It's not grandfathered in any longer?
It is.
Yeah, isn't it, there's something about 50% on the books now, or in the ZTA now.
50% is commonly used when it was, with respect to substantial improvement.
Yeah.
Okay, so fairly common, average, okay. Under one and two there, on number two, I had any alteration of a historic structure? Where'd that come from?
The definition of substantial improvement from the flood ordinance. Because, you know, we have historic landmarks, you know?
In commercials, is it?
Not in commercials, yeah.
No.
Yeah, I don't know how it would, I don't know how it would apply. I mean, we'd have to designate a structure in the commercial property. I mean, it's not say it can't happen, but it's in there, I think it's best to leave, I mean, it could happen.
Anybody else on part two? Part three encompasses the sketch plan review, which we've been over. So, item B under 179 is basically what we have talked about in previous meetings. I mean, it's been a year since we've, we've hit this, so.
I have some comments to that.
Yeah, okay, start us off, Robert.
Okay, the first one is the paint colors should be of low reflectance. I'm not sure exactly what that means, because a white building is highly reflective. And we're asking for lighter, subtle, neutral tones. It's actually, you know, a dark color would be...
Less reflective.
Less reflective. So I'm not sure what the low reflectance is about. I would, light, light color.
Just say leave neutral earth tone colors.
Yeah.
That'd be it.
Okay. Well, do you want light colors? Are you okay with brown? I mean, brown, I mean, I'm not sure what we're trying to achieve.
True, because the reflectance could also be the type of paint. Because you have a high gloss paint too. And if a house were painted in high gloss, you know, it does make, it could still be white or it could be, you know, a neutral, but that gloss paint is still, I mean, so I think we were looking at something that was like a satin type of paint.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah. That's how I read it.
Yeah, we should, I think we should state that, that should be low gloss.
Well, we also had in paints, when we were talking about it in February of last year, the number of paint colors on the building.
Yes.
And I would add also in paint that, there's no, nothing in here on signage necessarily on the building itself, but I would certainly like to see no figures on the front of a building other than the properly sized sign. Our newest addition, the Kitty Halt there, has ice cream cones and candy canes and stuff like that on the front of the building.
So let's go back to paint colors.
Yeah, but I'm just...
What's the number of paint colors? Do we care about how many?
It's infinite.
Okay, that, so we don't care if they paint it 10 different colors?
Well, I don't know. I, I know we had discussion of how many colors.
Do you, have you run across that on any of the other? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The number of paint colors then is undefined, okay. What Andy is talking about, I go back to, I go down to item eight, which was my other comment, was that I, I don't think any of the visual interest things should necessarily be encouraged. I think they're, hey, look at me's, they're not architecturally significant. But that's, perhaps that's, that's a matter of style. And it goes to number nine, shall be constructed with hip, gable, and mansard roofs. I would say flat roofs should be at least included in there, if not encouraged. I mean, for a flat roof or... The flat top is the only original architectural style on the Outer Banks, and it was originated in Southern shores. And yet, this is actually prohibiting it.
Well, we're talking about commercial use.
That's right.
Versus residential use. And I'm with you on residential flat tops, but...
Well, a lower, a lower pitched roof, I mean, if you look at Southern shores Realty, it's, it's got a very slow pitched roof.
It's probably a one and 12.
If, yeah, right, right. And it appears very, it blends in with the horizon, it blends in with the landscape, in my opinion. But, and it's not, you know, they painted it some colors and whatever, but it's not, you know, like the red mulch in front of the Taco Bell. That's part of the reason lots of jurisdictions prohibit regular drive-through restaurants, because they all have a brand and they insist on their signage and their colors and their style to be exactly like their brand, you know, all across the country. Totally understand that. But I'm not really in favor of encouraging people to add dormers where there is no space, just for visual, hey there, you know, come look at me. Yeah, fake dormers, fake clock towers, all that kind of stuff is just architectural garbage, in my opinion. I would much prefer to see something that is of the area, that is not something that you would see in Virginia Beach, or in Richmond, or in anywhere else. I mean, if you want it to look unique, if we're going to create standards, then we ought to create standards that encourage looking like it's the Outer Banks, it's Southern shores. Not, no, anywhere.
That could certainly be in the eye of the beholder. I mean, I'm, as I said, I'm with you on flat tops. However, going from the ground, a parking garage, and two stories above that, and a flat roof, is looking like Cary, North Carolina.
That's what, that's what you're going to end up with, because of our height limitations. And almost all commercial buildings have a flat roof. They just have a, you know...
Mansard roof.
Well, they've got the fake front. I can't think of what it's called, getting old.
A parapet.
There you go. They've got a parapet up front that just standardizes all the way across and adds some sort of design element. They're already flat.
Well, that's, that would be kind of a shed, or sometimes.
That's right, that's right.
Which also isn't, you know, in there, it's...
That's right. To me, the hips and gables and the shutters and all of those kinds of things, it goes to trying to create a village look. And our commercial district is, it's not really a village. It's a couple of very large commercial properties for those purposes, so.
However, this is for future building, so we're looking at a future look. So I agree with, you know, the hip and the gable and the mansard, and we put in flat there. And where a number eight, put architectural embellishments that add visual interest, are encouraged and leave out all of the examples. Just make that statement, because we're going to see it when we get to site plan anyway.
Encouraged is loosey-goosey. It might as well say, if you feel like it, or maybe we'd like for you to do that, but it has no teeth. So I'm fine with leaving it in there just as a statement. And as far as adding visual interest to a facade or a roof, I'm not quite sure about watching clock towers, but...
I just don't like the word "are encouraged." That tells somebody, let's stick a Giga on here and let's add a little this and add a little lipstick.
They can do it if they want to.
It says we're encouraging it. That means we're going to like it when we see it. I don't think we should, I don't think we should say any of those things. I think architectural embellishments should have something, there should be some reason for it.
There you go. How about, keep that sentence, and instead of saying "are encouraged," will be reviewed at, when the site plan is submitted?
Or they already know that?
Yeah, well...
I think that replaces the word encouraged.
Maybe drop the embellishments. Because embellishments are...
Well, if you, if...
It's a catch-all, or could be anything.
Yeah.
Not functional.
You know, what, what we have in the commercial zone right now, Southern shores crossing and Marketplace are only two examples. I mean, what could we do to make them look better? I truly think the Marketplace has done a good job with their improvements in spite of whacking some trees that everybody was upset about. It looks a heckle a lot better, the paint scheme's good. They do have, you know, a facade up there that breaks up a flat wall, which I certainly think we want to be able to legislate breaks in walls and, you know, architectural interests that way. I'm fairly indifferent on item eight, because it says encouraged. So you guys want to rub eight out, get rid of it completely?
I would just say architectural embellishments will be reviewed, or something like that, or be, you know...
Add at your own risk.
I think we either, we either keep it in and, or we...
Don't encourage it.
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to a dormer that has no function over at Southern shores crossing. What looks better up there? The big flat section of roof or those dormers that they put in? Those dormers are, they're fake.
They add visual interest.
Yeah, they do.
And so, and so that's...
If you like dormers, I mean...
Yeah, well, again, architectural embellishments, like dormers, aren't necessarily, I would not encourage them. It's just, I would, you know, may be allowed, something like that? I think it's very dependent. If, you know, if somebody came in with, you know, with a design and it happened to have a little clock tower or it had dormers or whatever, and it might fit the whole deal, makes perfect sense to me, but...
So you just don't like the word encouraged?
Absolutely not. I don't like that word.
Well, replace it with something, what are we going to put in its place?
Will be reviewed.
Either will be reviewed, or just cut it back to architectural embellishments.
Just one suggestion, is it take out "are encouraged," or could you say "will be considered"?
Will be considered on a, on a case-by-case basis?
How do, how do you do that?
Based on the context, based on the context. If somebody wanted to build, if they wanted to develop the property next to Southern shores land, I mean, next to Southern shores Realty, and they came up with something that had dormers on it and it's sort of fit with the building that's behind it, and, you know, it made sense, that makes sense to me. They wanted to do something that, you know, had clock towers and ice cream cones and other things like that on it, that doesn't make sense to me for that spot.
I have a hard time on why it's even here. We're, we're telling them something, we'll, we'll see whatever they're developing at that time. Are we encouraging it? If we're encouraging it, then it's there, it's fine. If we're not encouraging it, why is it there? I mean, you're adding something, if we want that, that's, we could leave it in, but are we, are we encouraging that? And another thing, Wes, just to add to this, isn't there an ordinance after the bank where they put that tower in that was too high? Isn't there an ordinance now that you can't put anything like that unless it's, it can only do the 35 feet? So somebody couldn't come in now and put that, like the bank did? Because the bank is grandfathered in, but that's no longer legal.
It's a church.
Yeah.
Cupola.
The cupola, yeah.
Yeah, they, I think, yeah, it's still in here, structures excluded from height limitations, church towers of Belfry's decorative cupolas that do not exceed five feet in width on any side or 25 feet in cross-section.
Okay.
So we still allow it.
You still allow it, okay.
I'm, I agree with you, and I agree with your original suggestion. I think we should just take it out. And then, because just stating it, to me, it just sparks in a designer's eye. Well, we've got to put some of this in, because that's what they want to see.
It's got to be in black and white, unambiguous, for the developer to create his plan. I mean, I just, anything that has encouraged in there is, it's ambiguous and it doesn't hold anybody accountable. Whether it's the developer or the town enforcement, so.
And I'll, I'll add to it, if I may. You know, these are standards, and let's say someone comes into a sketch plan review and the board says, we feel like a cupola should be placed here, or some other architectural should be placed here. And then they say, okay, thank you for your input. And then when they submit officially, they don't have it.
Yeah.
We can, I mean, there's no, there's no teeth to it. We can't hold, you know, it's either, it's either it's a requirement they have to meet it, or it's not.
I mean, I, I still, I mean, if we could put teeth in it and say that, that you had to have, you know, some of these weaved into your plan, that would be one thing, but we can't. I mean, well, I don't have a problem with leaving it in there, just as a feel-good. I mean, there's other language in our zoning ordinances that says things other than shall. You know, there's some may's and, you know, some shoulds and stuff like that. So I'm, I don't, I don't have any heartburn about leaving the intent of what it says. It's just maybe encouraged, and we could say shall be considered, or something like that, and get rid of encouraged.
Yeah, I, I think we're, if, if it's so confusing, and we don't know, and I don't know why it's there. If somebody, if somebody... If somebody, if somebody submits a plan with a cupola, okay. They submit a plan and we review it at the time. Unless you think aesthetically, these things are going to add. And again, it's going to be reviewed and we might say aesthetically, it really looks like it doesn't. I just, I don't see, you know, that's just my personal thing. I don't see why it's there. If, if we're having this much discussion over one sentence, um, I, I think there is a, a reason for it not to be there. And we'll see when they, when they put it in. It's, it's almost like telling houses residential things, you know, well, we encourage you to do this and then they're going to do it or we let them do it and then we, you know, review the plan.
If we just said architectural embellishments that add visual interest are encouraged. And don't say what any of those things are.
Yeah.
I think I said that about 15 minutes ago.
Let, let's go with that and move on.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry we didn't hear that.
Architectural elements that add visual interest are encouraged. Period.
Yes, sir, I have that.
Except for candy canes and ice cream cones.
That's not enough. Those are marketing.
Um, okay. All right, let's.
Uh, um, if someone were to place architectural embellishments like candy canes on their building, does that have anything to do with signage at that point?
I think, I would consider it a contributing to the square footage of your signage.
Yeah.
Your maximum 32 square feet or 64, whatever it was.
Because it's attached?
Because of the definition of sign. I mean, it's, it calls attention to.
Mm-hmm.
I, I would say each little candy cane or sucker or whatever.
Yeah, it goes with.
Goes, is considered a sign.
Yeah, it's a sign.
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's in our sign ordinance.
And it contributes to the square footage, the maximum that you're allowing.
Yeah. Um, well, let's roll down the list. I mean, we're, you got the gist of what.
You added flat to number nine, Wes.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
And shed, put sheds in there as well, shed roofs.
So we have hip, gable, flat, mansard or shed?
And, you know, we actually, I had a note of this. We actually talked about the Kill Devil Hills roof pitch minimum in the commercial zone was a 412. That's way more than Southern Chores really has.
Yeah, I, I, I think we could probably eliminate number nine. What else is there? So hip, gable, mansard, flat. Is there anything else?
True.
Zero.
And, I mean, I, I understand requiring pitches and all those kinds of things. If you're trying to create a village or you're trying to create a specific look, at this point, I think what we have is a visual from the front as much as anything. And if somebody wants to use their height to create a pitched roof, more power to them. That's great.
So do we want to scratch nine since, I mean, basically we're saying that the building ha- has to have a roof? Rocky?
Yeah, that's basically.
I mean, I think that's what number nine says when you put in flat roofs and, and sheds. So I think.
Uh, no, I'm, I, I agree with.
So let's X out number nine, Wes. Uh, number eight, you've made, I'm, I'm working backwards now here.
So how do, how do y'all feel about the, um, um, the thing that's done where, um, you know, parking is underneath?
Underground parking.
Well, under the building parking in our, in our case. Um, is that something we would encourage? When I think about, you know, Southern Chores Landing, it's a, you know, it's a tractable building just like it is, but if, you know, something happened and they were going to rebuild, would we want to encourage them to go ahead and use the, use two floors of occupancy and have the ground floor, um, with some parking?
Think they could, I mean, we're getting way off subject here, but I mean, it's a.
If we want to encourage that, if we want.
Commercial, I mean, it's in a commercial setting, but.
I mean, that, no, commercial, uh, like 10 buck two, duck, all of that stuff.
Let's go through this list and then I'm, we'll circle back through.
Okay.
And because I think that might relate to, um, the, um, FAR, uh, stuff that Wes sent us.
Okay.
Um, so we're working, let's work backwards now. We've hit nine, we've eliminated nine. Wes is going to wordsmith eight better for us. Wall artic, and number seven, wall articulations or breaks in the facade or roof line shall be designed not less than every 50 feet. I think that's probably a good thing to keep in there, um, just to
Yeah.
keep from being so, I mean, the, the marketplace uses it and, um, it just adds a lot more interest to it. So everybody okay with number seven?
Yes.
Okay. Um, number six, no awning on any building which encroaches on a sidewalk or pedestrian walkway shall extend out from the building more than two-thirds the width of the sidewalk, nor shall it at any point be less than eight feet above the sidewalk. We okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Number five, windows shall compromise no less than 10% and not more than 40% of each building's vertical wall area. I think that also is a good maximum and minimum. And we, we beat this around and I think we agreed on it the last time. So we'll check that. Robert, this stems from you. The fences shall be constructed of wood or matched materials used for the building. You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so check by that. Mechanical equipment shall be screened and shall not be visible from any right-of-way. Um, I think that's also worthwhile. So everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Then number one, we've talked about, um, Wes is gonna rework that a little bit. So that's what we looked at and kind of culminated our previous two meetings on, um, commercial design standard, standards. Um, Michael Zener, who's not here tonight, uh, had, uh, written Tony. Are you going to read that?
You want me to read it? Yeah.
You can. Did, did you copy the other board members on what Michael had sent to Tony?
I don't think he saw what Tony was, was sent to Tony. I just sent, I just shared the article.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I contacted, Michael and I talked after the last meeting and discussed FAR. And he finally sent, well, I shouldn't say finally, he sent the, uh, definition and, and how he calculated, here it is, how he calculated. Because if, if you remember when we were, when we were discussing the, uh, property on, uh, on the highway, I, I forget the. Gingite. Yeah, there you go. Gingite. Thank you. Well, we, he did a calculation that showed that if that property went forward with how, with the information we received, it would actually be more dense than the marketplace.
As far as volume.
As, as far as volume goes. So, and what that it means is the density on a small area is much larger. And a lot of places now, uh, they have included in their codes and the FAR aspect of it. Uh, and here's what it is. He took the total floor area or square foot footage of the Gingite project and divided it by the lot area acreage. And then did same for the marketplace, ending up with the floor area square foot per acre. And this is, it's a easy calculation once you get that. Now, it also includes, uh, but all levels. So it does not include unoccup, like unoccupied places, but.
Like underneath.
Underneath.
Parking.
Park, it does not include that, but it does include the floors. And it includes just about any property, like that property on Gingite had a restaurant. It had business offices. It had residences. And then if you take the square footage of all those properties, of all those structures and went up against the square footage of the lot, uh, the buildable lot, you used a buildable lot. It was highly dense. It was a very dense, uh, situation. And a lot of counties now and a lot of, a lot of towns are now using this FAR ratio. Uh, and they've included in their zoning to calculate the density of what is being built. And the higher density, uh, you know, they, what they've done is put a, a figure on what density level that they want. That's basically what it is. And Mike and, uh, Michael and I were communicating back and forth on this. And, uh, he can't be here tonight. He explains it much better than, than I can explain it.
Is, is that the most recent one that he sent last week that I got a cop, I got copied on?
I, I sent you a copy of this. Yeah.
Can you read that?
Sure.
I mean, I, I think he, you asked him if you could and he said.
Yeah, I asked him. I didn't want to include, I don't, yeah.
So why don't you read that to us and then we'll.
I've been meaning to follow up with you, with you since our discussion after the last meeting to just explain what I have done to compare the density volume of development of the Gingite development to the marketplace. Essentially, I took the total floor area square footage of the Gingite project and divided it by the lot area acreage and did the same for the marketplace, ending up with the floor area square foot per acre. As I mentioned, and, and, and you are familiar, there is another way to calculate. Look at this. Refer to as a floor area ratio, which is FAR, the acronym is FAR, where you would divide the total floor area square footage by the lot area in square feet to end up with the ratio and percentage. He, I tend to prefer, this is him, I tend to prefer the floor area square foot per acre. But with the FAR, you can perhaps compare the relative ratio percentage of floor area to lot area. Either way, I think it is a good way to compare the density and volume of buildings between multiple sites. If not, also set a standard through policy and regulation. Given the limited amount of commercial development, it would be fairly simple to calculate this for all commercial properties in town. And perhaps that is a data point to evaluate when considering commercial design standards. What looks too dense with respect to our vision for the town versus what seems to be the correct range or limit? That's basically, and if anybody wants a copy, you have a copy of this, Wes, right?
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't get what he, I mean, I think it was at our last planning board meeting when we, uh, voted, uh, on the Gingite project. I believe he had those calculations in, didn't he?
Yes.
Do you all remember?
Yes, he, he had the calculations and that's where he said that the Gingite property was more dense.
Right, right.
Than, than, than.
Sure, cause it's.
Yeah.
Over two floors.
And, yeah.
Marketplace is one.
One, yeah.
Um, well, I found this, uh, floor area ratio, uh, article, just, just Googled it. And this one was by far the most extensive, um, and Wes, you know, has copied it and well, got it. Uh, I, I've read through it and I, I think it has some value in, in conversation. I'm not quite sure I'm, would understand how we could put a ratio in our ordinance that would encompass several different situations. Um, I, I don't know how we do that. Uh, but I, I would like for Michael to, when he gets back, quite possibly Michael and Wes and I, for starters, would sit down and look and we'll task Michael with, since he's not here. Uh, we'll task him with, with maybe researching and with Wes, and I'll be glad to jump in there too. Uh, to see what the two large commercial projects that we have in town currently uh, have as far as a volume ratio, whether it's the FAR or something else. But I, I think that when we were going through our meetings, uh, on the Gingite project, a concern, and I know, Robert, you had it, was the volume of the, the buildings themselves. And I know that we want to try to mitigate some of that. I'm not quite sure I am.
I'm not sure the FAR, introducing FAR would do that.
Yeah.
I don't believe that it would.
I don't think we could come to a, a number that we could put in our ordinance that would pertain to every situation that would come along. I, I, I just don't see it, but.
I, I asked him for his calculations on it and he got rid of them.
Yeah, I remember he told me.
So, uh, those calculations that he spent that time with, with the Gingite versus are no longer, he'd have to recalculate.
Well, I think you could go back and look at the YouTube, uh, because he read it out.
That's true too.
The YouTube of that meeting, he, he, he definitely read it out, but, um, I mean, Wes, do you have any experience with the FAR?
I don't, no, sir. Um, and I'm like you, I, I don't know, we, I need to spend some time with it. And, um, I think that's suggesting you, Michael and I and you, um, sit down and talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know how you would put a number. I, I don't know what number's high, what number's low. So we would need to look at it and look at examples and how they apply in other, how would they apply in other jurisdictions? Um, I think it needs to be studied a little bit and we can certainly do that and discuss this more. And, um, I don't, I do think that it's probably a good idea to include something that addresses the volume
Yeah.
of development on a parcel. Um, so we'll see if this is a good way to do it or not.
Well, I, I think Michael is a very good source because he's got experience. Uh, he's been down in Nattieshead. It's what he's done for a living. Uh, and if we can get some free help out of him, that'd be good. And if, if it's okay with you all, I will, um, you know, start out, you know, with uh, Michael and Wes and myself. I mean, we, uh, can only have two planning board members at the time, you know, as far as the sunshine laws go. But I'll be glad to jump in there and, and, and listen. Wes and, and Michael have a lot more input about it, but, uh, I, I don't think that, you know, we need to go any farther on what the FAR would mean in our commercial design standard. But I certainly would like to, to move forward with these standards. And, you know, if we gotta add on to them at a, um, you know, going along, then that's what we do. I mean, we've done it tonight. Um, we've, we've added on to a, a fresh ZTA with the lot width. So we can certainly add on language to a ZTA that becomes an ordinance. So with that, I would like to just say we'll put it to the next meeting to hopefully get Michael involved.
Yeah.
Maybe we can be FAR enough along that we can incorporate what we found into a reasonable ZTA and then bring it before the board and.
As we finish with the FAR discussion, on page 21 of the thing you sent, it says, however, uh, blah, 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 the premiums are overly complicated for a small community and should not be duplicated blindly. Furthermore, the benefits of floor area ratio appear to occur only in high bulk zones where building height is not a major consideration.
Yeah, now I've got it circled.
So I'm not sure that it would apply here unless we wanted to use it as an incentive.
Yeah.
I, I. I, I, you know, the whole idea of low density development. Sometimes people lose fact, lose sight of the fact that it might be better to have 20 apart, 25 or 30 apartments in one building that goes up five stories. As long as the rest of the space is open space. As opposed to spreading them all out, all over the ground. So FAR might be something we could do as an incentive or as a, an exception to allow for greater density or to, to move the density, basically.
Well, we're, we're, we're thinking about one particular property too.
Well, I'm, you know, any of the, any of the commercial properties I've said before that, that sometimes, you know, it might be better to go ahead and allow a five or six story retirement home on a smaller footprint as long as the rest of that land is open space and recreation space.
I reckon that would be a hard sell in Southern Shores, Robert.
It might be, it might be, but from a, from an environmental standpoint, a low impact standpoint, that's a better way to develop. May not fit here.
Well, I think that we're, you know, we kind of hit, hit the end of the trail for tonight. But I will get a hold of Michael and he and I and Wes will beat it around, hopefully. They can get out in front and I'll come and say, yeah, that looks good.
And do we have to make a motion about the changes? No?
No, I'll, I'll just, I've written down, I've got notes here on the feedback you all provided, so I'm just, what we did before, I'm just gonna take this feedback and revise the ordinance and I'll bring it back to you all. Thank you all for your input.
Thank you.
All righty. I noticed we have two guests in the audience. How y'all doing tonight? We're, we're at the point on here for public comment. Do you fellows have anything you would like to talk to us about? Come up to the podium and state your name and your address.
My name is Michael Flores and I just want to introduce myself. So appreciate what you guys do. I'm a architect and have practice here for a number of years. The topic of the commercial design standards is of particular interest to me. I have, you know, a fair amount of experience in working with other communities and conforming to the standards that, and, and it's, it's amazing or kind of interesting, you know, what the what the outcome might be. I think there was a comment about the dormers. At times you may find that some permit applicants will just have a dormer stuck on there, just to meet the, meet the code. That's not my, not my thing, but I'm curious on the, the building here in Kitty Hawk that we've referred to as to whether or not there was an architect employed on that building. Because the North Carolina state law requires an architect on a project like that to get, you know, the results that are on that building. I'm not sure a North Carolina registered arch, anyway. Nice, I, I appreciate what you guys.
Do you live in Southern Shores?
I do, I'm at 40 Duckwoods Drive.
Yeah, you've been here a while, haven't you?
I have, quite, quite a while.
And you sat on this planning board, haven't you?
I, I did, yeah, yeah. And I think it was oh, oh four to
Yeah.
10 or something like that, but, yeah, it was a good experience. That's why I salute what you guys do. It's a very, very helpful. Where it all, where it goes is another, you know, another matter, but the discussion is healthy, it's good for the community.
Well, we're, we get taken to task sometimes for pulling the reins back a little. But I, I think that's our intent is to keep them pulled back as much as possible.
Right.
Thank you for your comment.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Just, my name is Matt Flores, I'm also a resident here in Southern Shores. Electrical contractor by trade, but I've grown up listening to my dad share with me ideas and visions about what a, an architectural facade can comprise of and how it can compel our community to look vibrant and holistic to what its, you know, origins are. With line item, I believe it was number eight, you guys were kind of going back and forth about the language that could be used. It just kind of kept ping in my brain that the architectural details of a coastal design are favored. Whether it be with whatever elements that can be developed and used for both functionality or just a fake facade. I feel like that the word coastal design could be well, well handled in this situation, but that's just a, an electrician's suggestion. And then on line item number seven, or I'm sorry, not number seven. If line item seven were deleted, I, I want to go back to the one where we talked about the roof sections and where we, we suggested that flat roofs could be added or maybe we should delete the roof types altogether. The other thing that kind of pinged my brain in that aspect was the fear of how would you guys guide somebody if they came in with a top level elevation view that tied into the roof section that had a, a castle orientation. So that concern without language on the roof types that would be allowed leads me to fear that that could be a flexibility that those folks might have. And of course, I don't want to see that. But that's just personal preference. And I appreciate you guys sharing the floor. Thank you for your time and your effort.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Flores's.
Yes, sir.
Father and son.
Yes, sir.
Great, might be the first one we've had up here. Well, thank you. And stay, stay tuned. I mean, we're, we're trying, this is, this is two years we've been beating on this or, and we got interrupted by the Gingite project and now we're, kind of the slate's cleared there for a bit, so we can kind of focus on what we're doing here. But anyway, thank y'all for participating.
One of the issues that, one of the issues that, that concerned me with one of the proposed developments was the massing of the buildings and the fact that there was just, it was just a big mass, basically, that you couldn't see through at all, especially in this location, in this particular location. If you have any ideas that you think of about how we could add to our commercial code, something about massing of, you know, separate buildings. I mean, the, the traditional form is just a big, long, linear form, basically with some articulations, maybe to show the storefronts a little bit differently and, and that kind of thing. But anyway, if you have any ideas about massing and how, what's appropriate to recommend for for commercial design standards, I would appreciate here from an architect or an engineer.
Nothing off the cuff, but, but you know, we'd like to give it, give it some thought.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Just, just breaking them up a little bit in some way. I know that when I discovered that the Southern Shores landing, you know, it looks like an L, an intact L. And it's, and actually the same for the southern, but there's actually a corner, open space there where, you know, people can go through or you can get air through, light through. That's a, that's a fantastic feature and I don't know if it was required or how it came, how they came to be, but the fact that there is a separation there is really a nice human scale kind of thing. It's useful. I've, I've employed that to meet the limitations of building length at times in the past and I've always liked the results of, rather than have 240 foot of continuous building to be able to break it down into, you know, 80, you know, 120 and right, to, to just break it up with an open, open breezeway kind of, kind of connection. Town of Manio has a limitation on building length that I think is, is useful. For, you know, for maintaining the looking field of building scale within, you know, within a community. To, to build, I mean, you can see the, the college buildings there, for example. They're large, they definitely, you know, dominate, they're, you know, they're different kind of, different kind of use. So it's understandable, but you know, if you plop one of those in the middle of the downtown area, it might be different.
Maybe Wes, you can dig up Manio's ordinance on length of buildings. That'd be great.
Manio Wayfield.
Okay, well, we're gonna move on. Planning board comments, Jan? Tony?
Yep. I'm good.
I'm gonna just remind everybody, if you didn't know, the Coastal Studies Institute is having their open house this Saturday from 11 to 3. And so if you are curious or if you have school age kids, take them down there. This is the day that all the researchers are there with all other technicians and they show all the gizmos and how they work and all the research they're doing in the area. So it's really a great thing, especially if you have kids to integrate, interact there.
All right. Okay, Wes, announcements?
Yes, sir. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be, is scheduled for May 20th. On that agenda, we will hopefully have revised commercial design standard GTA as discussed tonight. Also, at the last meeting, you all asked for a discussion and agenda item for affordable housing as it relates to the planning board in the town. Mr. Zener requested that agenda item. So that will be on the agenda. And we may have like 2401 and 2402 modernization of our code as directed by council. We might have some more proposed amendments along that line as well in other GTA.
You know, I talked briefly about it and maybe I will back up to planning board comments, but I was asking Wes about the possibility of putting some language in there, residential language on the tree ordinance that we were looking at. And, and I mean, it was basically commercial and I still feel like as a planning board, we need to address it at the residential stage. I'm not advocating saving trees so much as advocating being able with a lot disturbance permit to come in and take every tree down on the lot and let it sit for 10 years. It, it's happened here and it, once you get a lot disturbance permit, you should be forced to move ahead, rather than just say, oh, I wanted to clear my lot because I'm getting ready to build. Anyway, we, I, I feel like that we need some more attention paid to that. The town council didn't ask for us specifically to do that, so I'm certainly of the opinion that this board needs to look into it farther when we get a little bit of breathing space. Been doing it since 2005.
Yeah. Andy, are you thinking within the building, within the buildable area restriction within that or the entire lot?
Pretty much have it read just like the commercial reads.
Which is just the building area, I think.
That's the.
If you move a tree inside a rear setback area.
Yeah. Anyway.
If you remove a tree inside or rear setback areas, you have to obtain a permit, lot disturbance permit.
Right. Our debate at the last meeting was that the residential wasn't in there and we would pass it.
Yeah.
Because it was imminent possibility that something may happen on, on a commercial basis. So that's why we passed it. I, I voted against it, but it was, you know, four to one, so it went on. Anyway, that's, that would be my comment.
Okay.
All righty, I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Jan. Jan seconds. Adjourn.